Brian Kennedy.
Kathleen Broner.
Jeremy Carrier.
Ron Arrow.
Representative Ryan.
Attorney at Ryan representing the zoning board of appeals this evening.
Okay, I'm going to read and introduce the decision of the select board. Three special articles. Violation number one, the special permit and site plan approval for the construction of a new shooter shed dated January 25th, 2010 is filed with the town clerk on February 18th, 2010 and recorded with the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds. And book 10119, pages 119 through 135 expired prior to construction of the shed. The special permit has a two-year expiration date and the shed was constructed after March 12th, 2012. Due to the lapse of the special permit, the club was required to apply for a new special permit for this construction of the shooter shed that occurred after March 12th, 2012. The club is hereby ordered to cease use of the shooter's shed until such time as it obtains a valid special permit and site plan approval process has been completed and the structure receives a certificate of occupancy. This cease and desist order is effective immediately upon your receipt of the letter. Violation number two, Granby Zoning Bylaw, Section 5.8, Earth Removal Bylaw. The club failed to obtain an earth removal permit for the removal of earth material from its property in excess of 15 cubic yards as required by Section 5.81. The club is hereby ordered to cease and desist the removal of earth material from the property until the club complies with Section 5.8 of the zoning bylaws and reserves the right to impose penalties in accordance with Section 5.85 of the zoning bylaws. Violation number three, Granby Zoning Bylaw, Section 6.2, Special Permits. The club failed to obtain a site plan approval and special permit for the creation of a thousand-plus-yard-long high-powered rifle range as required by Section 6.29 of the zoning bylaws. The creation of this 1,000-plus-yard-long range constituted a substantial change, alteration, or expansion of the range in violation of Section 6.29. The club is hereby ordered to cease and desist the use of the 1,000-plus-yard-long range until such time as a special permit and a site plan approval process has been completed for the 1,000-plus-yard range and/or finding from the appropriate permitting authority, this cease and desist is effective immediately upon your receipt of this letter. Further, the club may be subject to additional penalties for the aforementioned violations and according with Sections 5.8 and 6.8 of the zoning bylaws. The club may appeal this decision of the zoning force officer in accordance with Sections 6.01 of the Granby zoning bylaws. So what we're going to do, we're going to set some ground rules first because this is strictly an appeals hearing. So all questions and comments, basically, will come to me, all right? And the Granby Bow and Gun Club, the party of bill, will process the first and make an opening statement if it wishes, and then they call witnesses and introduce documents or exhibits. The club completes its presentation. Excuse me, the chair of ZBA will call upon the town to make an opening statement if it wishes, calls witnesses, and presents exhibits. When the town has completed its presentation, the chair will permit both sides, if they wish, to present a summary in support of their position. Please note that during the presentation of both sides' cases, the ZBA will not entertain or permit questions or comments from those in attendance unless counsel for either side calls them as a witness. The chair will introduce and make a joint exhibit number one, a copy of the select board's decision dated September 6th, 2017. The chair reserves the right to exclude evidence he determines is not relevant or related to the issues on appeal. Counsel, will you have all these persons here to attend the call? As witnesses, please rise and raise the right hand if there's anybody that you're going to meet. You swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Counsel, for this talk, you may proceed.
Good evening, board members, attendants. Today, we're here on behalf of the Granby Bow and Gun Club to challenge the decision of the select board that was issued just a few months ago.
Could you speak up, please?
To begin, I would like to introduce myself again. My name is Justin Rapelson, and this is my co-counsel Martha Dean. As a preliminary matter, I would like to make a note on the record that we have submitted our legal memorandum at the last meeting, and we have also submitted affidavits. Furthermore, we have an inquiry to the board, if we may, regarding the executive session that was scheduled prior to this meeting.
That was the select board's.
Was that held?
That was not our meeting. That was for the select board.
Okay. Do you know if that was held, though?
Pardon?
Do you know if that was held?
As far as I know, it was held.
Yes.
Board members, I'd like to remind you of just a few things before I begin. Firstly, this is not an issue of noise. This is an issue of zoning, as you know. Nothing about biomix and noise presented by the town or any of the residents should be considered in this hearing. The first thing that I would like to do is call Martha Dean to give you some background factual information prior to our legal arguments.
If anyone can't hear me, just please raise your hand, and I'll try to project more. The Granby Bow and Gun Club was founded in 1947. It owns approximately 260 acres in the eastern section of Granby, close to Belcher Town. This is a rural, relatively undeveloped area of the town. The range extends up to the Belcher Town border, where there is a north-to-south range of hills and beyond which there are houses. For the most part, the houses that exist in the area of the range have existed there for a long period of time and came into existence after the range, long after the range was established. The range was established as a shooting club facility. It continues to be a shooting club facility. That's its primary purpose, and that purpose and that use of the property has not changed over the more than 70 years that the club has been in existence. As I said, the range, the club owns approximately 260 acres of land, and approximately 100 of those acres in the southern portion of the range, of the club property, are the outdoor rifle range. The rifle range has always had a lower shooting area and an upper shooting area, and those two shooting areas both aim in the same direction down the rifle range and shoot at different targets at different distances. The upper shooting range area is used for shooting at targets at longer distances and the lower area at targets at shorter distances. Now, their range opponents, as we'll call these people who have been complaining about the range since the fall of 2016, suddenly out of the blue, have raised a large number of claims, and they've gone to the media, they've gone to the town, and they have perpetuated and disseminated false claims against this range, claiming that there is a new rifle range, claiming that a new type of firearm, more powerful or different, is shot suddenly on the club property, making all kinds of claims about everything from lead to tax status to the disposal of a biomix, a toxic sludge material, nothing could be further from the truth, to raping the land and leaving it in a deforested state, to creating strange wildlife patterns we heard at the select board of coyotes now having different habits and bothering the neighbors around the range. So there's been, in our estimation, approximately eight or nine different claims that have been made by these range opponents against the range, all of a sudden, starting in the fall of 2016. Over the more than 70 years that the club has existed and operated ranges at its property, club membership has risen and fallen, as it does with all shooting clubs. It all turns on the popularity of the shooting sports, and just like with any sport, depending upon how many people want to play football in a given year or soccer, then you have to build more fields or create more recreational space, depending upon what activity is popular. And that's true at shooting range facilities, too. At this club, they happen to have a long, the ability to shoot at targets at a long distance. That's not true at many clubs, and so as that type of shooting at long-distance targets has become more popular, this club has also become more popular. Now, over the past 10 or so years, the leadership of the range was aging, and as the leadership aged, they weren't able to undertake the routine maintenance of the range that is necessary to keep a range and maintain it in a safe manner and to make it appealing and well-maintained for members, and that was through no fault of their own, but they were just simply not up to the physical labor involved. As newer, younger leadership came in, starting in the mid-2000s to the present, this work that had been postponed at the range for some period of time began to take place. So saplings that had grown up into trees were cut back, and areas that had become overgrown generally on the range were reopened. Now, this is normal routine maintenance that takes place at any shooting range, and the larger the shooting range, the more maintenance of this type is required, and this was really, these were tasks that were way beyond the ability of the aged leadership to take on. With a new leadership, they prepared a new environmental stewardship plan, continuing the past practices that are required under federal and state law for managing lead, but creating a new plan. They obtained a forest-cutting permit. We would submit that a forest-cutting permit is not required to cut back brush and shrubs and trees on an existing shooting range, but they were not aware of that. They were trying to avoid having to hire attorneys, and they went forward and obtained that permit. They also worked with DEP when they realized that they needed wetlands permits and under a consent order and undertook a number of tasks that DEP requested that they take on. At great expense, they hired a wetlands biologist, they delineated wetlands on the site, a significant effort in a large site like this to delineate in the areas of the range so that they could do work on the site to maintain their ranges, to keep it safe, to maintain their backstops, and again, you know, many, many thousands of dollars were spent on this. So they've undertaken the work to obtain many different types of permits and approvals. There's been oversight from the state, there's been oversight from the town, and wrapped up in all of these approvals is a permit that was issued in 2010 for the construction of a new shooter shed on the rifle range. Now, this permit was issued in February of 2010, and immediately, the club started work for the construction of the new shooter shed. And the work that was, is encapsulated in this permit is the, to take down the old shooter shed, to prepare the site, to obtain materials, to hire contractors and find materials that can be donated, contractors that are willing to do work at no charge, and to put all this together and raise the funds as a not-for-profit organization. You don't have a cash source of income, so you have to raise funds. But they immediately started the work and did much of the work during the next two years. There's been much made of the visual appearance of the range right now, and if you were to look at a Google Earth photo, you would see that much of the range area has been cleared. This is a normal process in maintaining any range. This is how you keep a range safe. You want good visibility on a range. Can you use a range as the trees start to grow in? Sure, you can use it and use it safely for a while. It's not convenient for getting heavy equipment in and out and that sort of thing, but you can still use it safely. But it was getting to the point where it could no longer be used safely, and really, if it was going to be a modern range and it was going to attract new members and do all of the things that it has been very successful at doing in the past two years, it needed to come up with a broader plan to regularly maintain the range and the property. And so the maintenance that was done included building the new shooter shed. The old shooter shed had a leaky roof and attracted hornets, which obviously is not compatible with safe shooting. And they cleared the area around the upper shooting area, where the shooting had been taking place for many years, made it easier for a line of shooters, for several shooters to be there and shoot at the same time. And they cleared the range so that there was good visibility all the way downrange so that you can see your targets clearly, you know if there's an animal in the way coming onto the range, or heaven forbid, somebody who shouldn't be on the range property. They also put up signs around the range, warning anyone who might come onto the range property that this is a shooting range and warning them of the danger. So the current supposedly deforested state of the shooting range is really a result of the fact that the range opponents have interfered with the ability of the shooting range to finish the work that was planned in this long-term maintenance, operation and maintenance plan. And that work included, they had the good fortune, as they were coming up with these long-range plans for maintaining their range regularly, that work included revegetating the range so that it would be green and with grass and manageable vegetation. And they had the good fortune to come in contact with Casella Organics that had an idea of mixing byproducts of paper waste that are not toxic, that are widely used on farms and probably where you, farms where you buy, that you buy your food from, and they mix these together with the soil on the site. And that was a plan to revegetate, which was with full permits from the state and the town, but that plan has been halted by these range opponents claiming that this is going to be a toxic waste dump and that what the range is doing is inappropriate. The club has engaged in multiple meetings with the state officials and town officials at the range property recently, when the range opponents complained to the Board of Health, raising new issues about lead, that it's some sort of hazardous waste site with lead. Yes, lead is allowed on shooting ranges, and under the US EPA's best management practices for lead at shooting ranges, it's allowed to stay there for a very long time. It has to be managed properly. It does not have to be eliminated. But nevertheless, the range opponents complained to the Board of Health and pulled the club into yet another committee, a board at the town level, and asked the Board of Health to investigate. The Board of Health declined, and they asked the club if they would be willing to invite DEP onto the site voluntarily. They did that and had DEP come in and confirm that, yes, they're managing lead properly. So all of this background is provided to demonstrate the extent to which untrue and intentionally incendiary misinformation has been peddled by the range opponents to the media and to the town boards in the past month. In addition to spreading false rumors of toxins being illegally disposed of at the property, they've spread the false narrative that's before the board tonight, which is that there's a new 100,000-yard range at the property and that the special permit for the construction of the new shooting shed lapses. We believe, we don't really know what's motivating the property owners, and we're not going to speak for what's in their mind or their hearts, but it is a fact that they purchased their property after the shooting range existed. There was loud shooting noise then, there's loud shooting noise now. They've always known there would be loud shooting noise near them, but it seems that they seem to have thought that the range would become defunct or that with the passing of older leadership, that the range would shut down and they would be able to sell their properties for more than what they're worth. They bought a property next to a shooting range, and that's what the property's worth. If they can shut down the shooting range or the shooting range shuts down, suddenly it's worth much more money. So they, it may be that they're angry that the club has been revived and is doing so well. We can't really say what it is that's driving them. But we will note that the range opponents' first complaint to the town and the media was about noise, and it was only when they learned that there was a Range Protection Act that prevents them from pursuing that claim, that they moved to all of these different attacks. They tried to attack the club's tax status, special tax status, and undermine that. Fortunately, that was unsuccessful, and as I said, they attacked lead and safety and zoning issues and building issues. Ever since the range opponents were ordered to stop trespassing on the shooting range property, and as you can imagine, having angry non-shooters trespassing onto your property and yelling at you and coming onto the property creates very dangerous, unsafe shooting conditions, but after they were issued no trespassing orders after repeatedly trespassing, they began an all-out assault on the club by calling the police department constantly. So since the cease and desist order has been in effect, the range opponents have called many, many times. We pulled up the police log with eight or nine calls with claims that the rifle range was in use when it wasn't in use. The police went out and investigated, found it was not in use, and also, and that it was actually the pistol range, and also times the police have been called out when there's no shooting activity and no one at the club at all, and it's the shooting from some other, several shooting facilities in the area, and it was coming from somewhere else. But nonetheless, the club and its members are subjected to constant police coming in and out, stopping matches, asking, I don't know, they stopped matches, but asking questions, and it certainly causes everyone to feel that they're under constant police surveillance, but this is a law-abiding club that has done nothing but tried to jump through all the hoops that they are required to jump through and more. Now, the range opponents have made claims about noise. We submit noise is not an issue here, and as anyone can imagine, as different types of shooting sports become more or less popular, membership goes up and down over the 70 years, shooting noises go up and down, and that's just a normal part of any activity, whether it's a soccer field near your home where you hear a lot of yelling and cheering on a Saturday afternoon when soccer's popular and a lot less when it's less popular and football's popular. This is just the nature of what, the kind of recreational use that is at this property. Now, we wanted to destroy, these are the facts that are in the brief that was provided to the board at the last meeting where the board declined to go forward with the first day of the hearing, but there are many other facts, or I'll say several other facts, that have come to light since the rescheduled hearing day. And they are troubling facts. We don't know what to make of them. We can't say that we can connect all the dots, but the facts are very disturbing. We just want to put them on the record. So first, we learned that there's a very large subdivision that's recently been approved just south of the shooting range property, large, 60 more houses. We've learned that the, that the range opponents' allegations against the range happened at the same time that these applications were moving forward and these plans were moving forward with the town, unbeknownst to the club. We learned that the, we went to a meeting this past summer where we were told that on the meeting agenda would be some complaints against the club that would be read into the record, and that the club and council would not be allowed to speak at the meeting. We show up at the meeting, and yes, the letters are read into the record, and then immediately, the Board of Selectmen issues a cease and desist order. The club never had a chance to be heard, never had a chance to correct the record, and felt very much that they were ambushed at a meeting where they were told the purpose was one thing and something very different happened. Since that meeting, we've learned that the developer, who is developing these homes just south of the range, this large number of homes, expensive homes, actually has a son, he's a real estate agent, and he happens to work at Keller Williams, and that Keller Williams has the exclusive listing for all of these properties in the town that are new properties that are going in, suddenly approved by the town this year, that are going in just south of the range. We also learned that right after the cease and desist order was issued this summer, that immediately after that, Keller Williams offered a job to the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and his daughter accepted that job offer at Keller Williams. We can't say what that means. We can say it's deeply disturbing to see this pass, very disturbing. So these are the facts that are before you, and we would just ask that this board use its discretion to separate itself from the Board of Selectmen's decision and to hear the facts anew and the law and make that a considered decision. Thank you.
Moving on to the legal arguments. So we'd like to begin in order from the first violation, the special permit conditions. It is our opinion that the special permit for construction of the shooter shed on the lowering floor fire area never lapses, and the reasons for that are numerous. The first one is the standard used in the bylaw does not mirror the standard used at state law. Now, the state law standard is found in Chapter 48, Section 9 of Massachusetts General Laws, and that standard states that zoning bylaws shall provide that a special permit granted under this section shall lapse within a specified period of time if, in the case of permit for construction, construction has not begun by such date. Now, the bylaw in Section 6.25 states that special permit will lapse within two years unless substantial abuse or construction has commenced and continues regularly. The key word here in 48, Section 9, which governs state bylaws, is zoning bylaws shall provide, meaning this additional term of continued regularly may very well not mesh with the state statute, and that's a problem because the state statute also goes on to state at the end, if construction has not begun by such date except for good cause. Good cause is also not found in 6.25 of the Granby bylaw. Both of these are very important because the club would be able to use the good cause exemption, and the club would be able to, would be able to use the, or not be subject to the continued regularly argument. And because the statute does not state continued regularly, it also does not require that the club continues construction after it first commences. And what I mean by that is there is a case called La Bussard Building Co., the Planning Board of Bellingham, 454 Mass. 123, which holds that a special permit for construction does not lapse if any form of construction commences within the town time allotted by a town bylaw. Now, it's unequivocal that construction commences within two years, and construction does not simply mean the erection of walls, the creation of the structure, the pouring of concrete for a foundation. Construction also covers the preparatory work, and there's also a case, an analogous case out of Winchester, zoning board of appeals, in an area called Wing Farm, which had yet to erect the structure for their building, but the ZBA determines that preliminary site work, including the installation of a road and utilities, sufficiently constitutes the start of construction. The same holds true in this case. The club undertook similar construction site work immediately upon getting the grant, the special permit granted in 2010. They raised funds, they hired contractors, they did some preparatory site work, they demolished the existing building. All of these actions are consistent with the Town of Winchester's ZBA decision and the La Bussard Building Co. decision that was decided in the Supreme Judicial Court. For the club to, for the, excuse me, for the board to enjoin the club from using its valid special permit on the grounds that construction had yet to begun is simply inaccurate because construction began exactly when it needed to, which was within two years of the permit being granted. And also, moving into the good cause argument. The definition of good cause, which would have applied to the club in this scenario, is well-understood, and it states that good cause means denoting adequate or substantial grounds of reason to take a certain action or to fail to take an action prescribed by law. or to fail to take an action prescribed by the law. It's well-understood what constitutes good cause, and it's usually determined on a case-by-case basis and is best relative. In this scenario, the club has had inadequate financial means when they first obtained the permit, and this is especially relevant because, just because they were granted a permit, just because they didn't begin construction activities of the actual building, doesn't mean that they are thus barred from using that permit at a later date because any sort of preliminary work goes hand in hand with the good cause exception. And of course, the club did have some financial difficulties. As Martha stated, they, they had aging leadership, and they were in a transitionary period where they had to pass over the torch to new members. And those new members, immediately upon getting into leadership positions, started to get everything set for the actual erection of the walls. Not only that, previous building inspector, who I'm not sure if he's passed away since or is not able to be reached, but he actually orally told them on numerous occasions to continue with the construction and that they didn't have to worry about renewing that So on the special permit issue, based on all those facts, there's no way that the select board could have enjoined the club, given they properly obtained the permit, they properly began construction activities, which does not necessarily include erection of the walls or the structure. And they also had good cause in case they weren't covered by the state statute. Excuse me. At this time, at the board's discretion, we'd like to call our first witness to supplement that argument.
Yes.
State your name for the record.
Andre Mursier, President of the Grand B Bow and Gun Club, Living Grand B, oh my gosh.
Okay, so Andy, we just, we want to get an idea of the construction activities that took place subsequent to the issuance of the permit in 2010. So when you, when did you first come on to the club?
I came on in 2005.
And after 2005, and after the permit was granted, what types of activities were taking place?
We started, once we got the permit, we started a construction project. It was a big project. We started working on the road and working, trying to get money to help us because we didn't have that much money. I donated myself to keep it going and put everything I could to get it going.
What, where else did you fund the project from?
From the road, all the way up to working on the project for the parking lot, and also getting construction guys to come and help us.
And how long did that process take?
That took a while, you know, free labor is hard. It took a couple of years.
How long would you say it took to secure the funds necessary to complete the entire project?
I'd say four years.
But it's your testimony here today that you began construction activities consistent with what I just spoke of, meaning with all the preliminary work. You commenced that right after the permit was issued in 2010?
Yes.
Is there anything else that you have to tell to the board regarding the site work?
Like I said, it's a construction project. Grand B Bow and Gun Club tried to do everything we could, make this project work out, and get money, and we did everything we possibly could to do it. I personally went to see the building inspector, and I believe he was Brian Laporte, who got, he was stepping in for a moment, and I asked him, and he told me, Andy, just build it. So that's what I did.
Andy, what did the preparation work entail on your end?
Leveling the parking lot, getting the site ready, getting material ready so we could level the whole parking lot, getting help from us. We didn't have the equipment to do it, and we had some very nice people that stood in and helped us.
At any point, did you stop construction or construction activities between the commencement and the end?
No.
And you're, to this day, you were just finishing up.
Yes.
But it took all of seven years.
Exactly.
Based on finances and all the prep work that had to go into. Moving on to the second violation, it's our position that the club did not unlawfully remove earth materials. We believe that the board's determination is an error as it relies on untrue and unsupported claims. In fact, at the select board hearing, there is no testimony made by anyone regarding what type of earth removal was done, where that earth was being removed to, or where it came from. The violation was issued primarily on an incline, a suspicion, if you will, and with no hard or concrete evidence. Now, any sort of movement of earth that took place on the club was not removal per se, and that definition is carved out in the bylaw and in state statute. Movement is very different from removal. Removal requires actual transportation of earth material to a site off of the club. And it's our position that that never happens. There certainly was movement of earth material, and movement is not restricted. It is perfectly legal under both the bylaw and state law. And in fact, the movement of earth material is very necessary for safety purposes to create safety backstops in the club range because somebody needs to, to keep the club safe. And to do that, you have to regularly landscape and move some of the earth around the property to set up backstops so that no one's getting hurt. In addition, the range was regraded on a number of occasions, and that's perfectly fine too under the bylaw. Movement of the lumber when some of the trees were cut to make the range safer was also perfectly appropriate, and none of that amounts to removal of any kind. And at the board meeting, at the select board meeting, no evidence of removal was presented, as I stated before. Going to the bylaw just real quickly, section 5.84 of the bylaw is, carves out an exception, which I've alluded to, and it states that when removal is incidental to the transfer of earth material from one part of a parcel of land to another part of the same parcel or to an adjacent parcel in the same ownership for the improvement of the property. So the Grand B bylaw etches out an exception that covers the exact scenario that I presented to you, which is that any movement was intra-property, and nothing was done inappropriately or illegally or against the bylaw. Finally, if I may call my witness.
Andre Mursier.
Just explain to the club the type of movement of earth that took place.
We used material from our club for the parking lot. We used material for firms, and we also had companies that were bringing in material at the same time and getting it, getting it, giving it to us, and that's what we did. And we had excess material where, when it was done, we didn't need that material, and they took it out.
Was there any sort of removal of their material? Removal to other, other sites, other areas outside of the club? Can you just explain one more time?
Okay. We moved material in our property for firms and parking lot. Trucking companies were coming in and getting us material, and they were also going to reuse their material for other jobs later on. So we had a pile of material that wasn't our material, and they took it out after. Because when they do jobs, they get excess material, and they want to give us material. But later, they reused their own material.
So it's your testimony that any, any earth that was moved was not your earth?
That was their material.
And from your understanding of the bylaw, that was perfectly okay? Okay, the final argument, or the final violation to review is violation number three, which is regarding the 1,000-yard shooting range. And it's our position today that there was no special permit required for the use of the rifle range's longstanding upper firing area. You've heard from range opponents in the past that this new, there's this new 1,000-yard firing area, and in fact, that position is false, for lack of a better explanation. The 1,000-yard firing area is, was a culmination of work that was done by club members to make this area that had been used historically more accessible. And the reason it needed to be, the reason it needed to be maintained is because it was not safe to be shooting up there. But safety and use are two different things, so they needed to be able to have a safe area to use an already existing area for firing. So what they did was they poured some concrete, they laid down a pad. No building permit was acquired, no special permit was required. It's perfectly fine to, to do this, and it was done for the sole purpose of investing footing for the shooters and for promoting safety. And without the concrete pad there, people would be slipping on mud, they'd be falling down the incline, and it would pose a serious hazard to shooters who are downrange. None of these activities, of course, constitutes a substantial expansion of use, which is what the, which is what the board enjoins the use based on, was that this was an illegal expansion of the use. And that position taken by the board, in our opinion, was an overstepping of their boundaries for a number of reasons. First, the board cites section 6.29 of the zoning bylaws. Section 6.29 of the zoning bylaws is about site, site plan approval. The club does not need site plan approval because the club is a pre-existing, non-conforming use. And what that means is the club is grandfathered in to be able to use the club for the exact same reasons that they had upon the enactment of zoning, which was around 1974. And in 1974, the club was used for numerous reasons, primarily target shooting. And target shooting has remains, the focal points, and it has not changed since 1974. So for the board to enjoin' the club from using the range for something they had been doing for over 40 years is inappropriate, especially by citing section 6.29, discussing the necessity to obtain a site plan approval, which was not appropriate or legally necessary. Now, what the club did do in 2010, what we spoke of many times earlier, is they applied for a permit to construct a shooter shed. And the shooter shed was a permit for construction, not a permit for use. Now, the ZBA had enacted conditions in the 2010 special permit, which are perfectly fine. Conditions can be set, time of use, and different safety restrictions can be added. However, that only applies to the shooter shed, it doesn't apply to the rest of the range. Because the shooter shed was granted a special permit, does that not then mean that the rest of the club is controlled by the terms of that special permit? So the 2010 permit specifically said that the club had to be vegetated, that hours of operation were from this hour to that hour. That's applicable to the construction portion that was the shooter shed. It doesn't apply to the rest of the range, and it does not defeat the non-conforming use status. So for all intents and purposes, the rest of the range was not subject to any of the use restrictions that were created with the special permit in 2010. What that means is that the club is a lawful, pre-existing, non-conforming use as it pertains to the rest of the club, including the 1,000-yard firing area, which had always been used. Now, the, just as a side note, the creation or the, the maintenance of the 1,000-yard firing area does not automatically make it a substantial use or extension, which is what the board deemed it as. Maintenance, regular maintenance is not substantial. It's done for the purposes of keeping the club modern and safe. And to further elaborate my point, I'd like to go through the powers test, which is the most important legal standard that the board has to consider today. And what the powers test is, it was laid out in the, in 1966 by the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court, and it's a three-part test, which determines whether a current use of property is protected as a non-conforming use. The first element is, does the use reflect the nature and purpose of the use prevailing when the zoning bylaw took effect? The second is, is there a difference in the quality of character as well as the degree of use? Third is, the current use different in kind in its effect on the neighborhood? Moving on to the first element, the nature and use of the property, it's our position that's unchanged. It's been the same since 1974. Membership has varied. It's gone up and down as it would with any other club. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's extended substantially. It's always been an area for target shooting, and the distances have also varied over the years, but that does not necessarily mean that they couldn't use it from 1,200 yards versus 100 yards. They always had access to the range, every part of the range, whether or not they were firing on a specific day from a specific part. Whether or not they were firing on a specific day from a specific park is immaterial. They always had the ability to use the entire range. The maintenance of the thousand yard firing line does not then amount to a substantial extension because they always had the right to use their firearms from that distance. The addition of the cement pads, again, didn't require permit. It was a safety element. It was necessary. More members were using that area and they wanted to protect their members and make sure that nothing bad happens on the range. The second element is the quality, character, or degree of use. And it's our position that there has been no change to the quality, character, or degree of use. And we have a number of affidavits which have been provided to the board. And I would like to quickly read them because they are imperative to our argument because many of these, several of these members were not able to attend because they are older. They have been members since before zoning was enacted. And I think that reading them will better, help the board better understand the argument. So the first affidavit was from Edward Louise of Chickapi. I'll just read it verbatim. "I've been a member since the early 1940s when it went under the name Chickapi Bow and Gun Club, Inc., and later as it is now known as Granby Bow and Gun Club, Inc., 85 Chickapi Street, Granby, Mass. I'm a veteran and served as a board member since 1947 until 2013, 66 years or so, when my driving restricted my ability to serve. I am still a life member, 70 years plus. I guess you can say I am its oldest and longest member. I have been listening and watching the news and find myself amazed at their creativity of the reporting of the news. I know a great deal about the club as I practically lived there as a lifetime member and board member. I was in charge of archery and membership and got to know most of our members personally. I am 90 years old and have been a member most of my life. It really saddens me at the misreporting and misinformation that is maligning the reputation that has been established since 1947. All clubs hope to grow and Granby Bow and Gun is no exception. We have never gone over 600 members. If a club fails to grow and changes with the times, they fail. The club has always been a bow and gun club, ever since I remember. Guys have been shooting pistols and rifles there, from the beginning right up to the present. Guys would shoot their rifles at long-distance targets from the hill where they now shoot targets at 1,000 yards on the rifle range. I often brought my son up there to shoot and I used to love saying hi to people who hunted at the club. They hunted the entire club area. Clubs like ours are more than people shooting bows and guns, they are a part of history. As a 90-year-old who has lived and learned, tradition is important. You cannot get rid of your history whether you like it or not, it's there and hopefully you learn from it. I recall many fond memories of walking through the club, observing nature, and the animals who lived there nearly. Everything from moose, turkeys, rabbits, deer, and other wildlife make our wooded areas their homes. Everyone, gun and bow, respect and enjoy seeing these animals. These things have not changed. The club would only get a forest cutting plan when it needed and when it was advisable. We probably should have started the recent work on the rifle range years earlier. The leadership was older and we didn't have the wherewithal to take on the work until more recently when new leaders developed a good plan for facilitating long-term range maintenance. We were responsible stewards of the land, we still are. We have wetland scientists and a lead management program. We are also socially conscious with our youth and AIM High programs. We have given a vet on our street a lifetime membership and I am glad he utilizes it. Recently, we had a charity event for the Hyatt family whose son is paralyzed. Unfortunately, we couldn't hold that because of the recent closure of the rifle range. But we made sure the family received $3,000 to help with medical expenses anyway. Our club continues to grow and we continue to give. Our club is an important piece of the bow and gun community. Instead of shutting it down, the town should embrace it and work with it. I'd like to thank the ZBA for their attention to this matter. Sincerely, yours, Edward Louise, lifetime member of the Granby Bow and Gun Club." So Mr. Louise, he was one of the oldest members and as he clearly stated in his memorandum, everything that's going on today was always going on pre-zoning. The next one's from a Tom Gagne. "My name is Tom Gagne, I'm a resident of Ludlow, Massachusetts. I am ex-president and longtime and lifetime member of the Granby Bow and Gun Club in Granby. As an avid hunter and fisherman, I can remember grand times of shooting my bow at the club's archery events. Growing up in the adjacent town of Ludlow, I hunted for pheasants and woodcock on the many fields and open lands in Granby. The reason I joined the club 25 years ago was due to my purchase of a deer hunting shotgun which is accurate out to 100 yards. I originally went to the Swiss River Land Management Area where it was posted that no target practice was allowed. So I went to set up power lines and set up a cardboard target. I wasn't shooting long when two guys on a quad came flying into my range. At that time, it took about a month to join the Granby Bow and Gun Club. I chose this club because it is a safe environment in which to target practice and bring my family, grandchildren, nieces, and nephews. It was and still is a place where people can learn skills and sportsmanship values. The club was a very socially conscious club and it wasn't long before I met with some of the finest men who defended our country in World War II. They have total respect for the club and the membership. These were the original founders of the club. These gentlemen were part of creating the very club that exists today. They wanted to pass on their hard-earned legacy and chose to groom me for the position of president. I served as its president for over 10 years while also assisting the club in a variety of other positions as needed. It was my privilege to service its membership until my health prevented me from continuing in service. The club's members were active archery and firearm shooters. We were shooting all types of firearms at short and long-distance targets years ago. The club property was also open to members for hunting, especially deer and turtles all year round. Members would target shoot by setting targets at their chosen distances at the rifle range, which covered 230 acres or so. Being responsible in our activities, shooters always made sure they had a safe berm or backstop behind targets. The club never had an incident under my watch. The club has always been responsible and continues to be so. The club's range was located from west to southeast across the central and southern part of the club property and still is. I remember that Ernest Quenville cut the road that went all the way up on the range to keep it accessible to the shooters who use it all the time to place targets at various distances. Nothing has changed at the rifle range except its more professional and organized appearance with improved visibility since saplings and brush had grown up in past years and needed to be cut back. The same firearms that were used by old timers coming out of World War II are still used by the members today, including semi-automatic rifles, shotguns, and handguns. The firearms make the same noise then and today. When we applied for the replacement shed permit, the town selectmen knew our intentions were to clean up and improve our facility and regrow our membership. We, Andre Mercier and myself, told them that we needed to get membership back up to at least 400-plus to meet the club's financial obligations. You can still find it listed in the documents on the internet. Legacies are important and our club honors time-honored traditions and legacies when they open their doors to families and members for every walk of life, over 70 years. Now a few people decided to upset the apple cart because they are not happy with decisions they made years ago to purchase land near a gun club. If you moved in next to this club after the year 1947, then you as a neighbor have nothing to complain about. Gun ranges are part of our heritage and as long as America is free, we will continue to have the ability to exercise our Second Amendment rights. Gun ranges such as our range protect the Granby community by providing a safe environment to practice with firearms. As an avid hunter and sportsman, I encourage people to join a club like ours and invest your time into it so you can leave a positive legacy behind for others. This is part of the American heritage our forefathers fought for in our past. I implore the board respectfully to do their duty considering what is at stake here. The club must continue so others can experience the pride and enjoyment of recreational shooting sports. Respectfully, Thomas Gagne, lifetime member." Mr. Gagne did a great job in describing the activities that took place in the club and as I stated before, they are in conformance with the activities that took place prior to zoning. They have not been substantially extended, they have only continued. Clarence Emil Roy of Chickapi, Massachusetts. "I am a lifetime member of the Granby Bow and Gun Club in Granby, Massachusetts. I started hunting in 1958. I've been a member of the club since 1964 where I served as its recording secretary for over 30 years. For all the years that I have been involved, the club has been recreational shooting and sportsman club. The club has always focused on safety. For instance, we didn't allow alcohol and so we were different from other clubs who have bars and encourage members drinking or events that included. We even barred smoking in the clubhouse once we realized that it could be a serious health problem. In short, we have always strived to do the responsible thing for the community and membership. I oversaw the rifle range until my health wouldn't allow me to continue. The rifle range encompassed over 200-plus acres of shrubs and fewer trees then, and I was unable to maintain the targets or target areas due to my limited walking ability. I stopped about 2006. I stopped serving as recording secretary about 2012. Members have always shot at long-distance targets on the rifle range in the hill area that is currently called the thousand yard area. Even though my health suffers, I continue to be a lifetime member and am very happy that the younger people have stepped up and continue to make both the archery and rifle range better and more modernized. We started a lead management program but the man who inspected our range passed shortly after. I am glad that we continue this effort now through the younger leadership and continue to do the responsible thing. The new leadership has spent money on conservation and upgrading the club to make it safer and more organized. Now the town is attempting to stop the club from exercising the same privileges they always enjoyed. Hunters and target shooters need a place to practice and enjoy. Granby Bow and Gun Club allows them to continue to have the pleasure of the outdoors in a safe manner. I would like to see the town work this matter out and allow the club to make good. The club is just growing with the times as it is better managed since that attracts members. People are more interested in these types of sports now. It would be a shame if the town continued with the cease and desist order. I am asking the town of Granby to do the responsible thing now and allow our shooters to regain use of the rifle range so our members can continue to enjoy their recreation they are being deprived of by the Board of Selectmen's action on September 5th, 2017. Sincerely, Clarence Roy." This is from Andre Mercier, who spoke earlier as one of our witnesses. My name is Andre Mercier, the presiding president.
At point of order, he's here if he wants to testify any further, doesn't need to read enough because he'll go to the record.
Okay, I agree. Is that going to be going in for the record?
No, he's, that's all set, we're not going to read that one. Okay.
We're going to introduce those other callers here. Introduce them as Exhibit B for the record?
Introduce these?
The affidavit?
The affidavit?
Do you intend to introduce them?
Yes. They have been submitted to the board.
They're not part of this hearing, this record.
Keith Fordyer. "I'm a Granby resident and I've been one all my life, attended your schools and worked in your town. From the age of 15, I've been involved in various shooting activities at the Granby Bow and Gun Club of Granby, Massachusetts. I must say that the town has done a disservice to its club members and its community by taking action against the club on September 5th, 2017, when they closed the 1,015-yard target area at the rifle range and a short-distance target shooting shed. A simple inspection regarding a permit was no reason to shut down most of the rifle range because a few neighbors complained of some of the noise made during competitions and long-distance shooting. Most days, there is very little to no shooting. The neighbors argue near the range was there, why complain now? Yet they are targeted by their neighbors, why? The town gave in to a handful of people who don't even know the truth about what is really happening. They listened to a few misguided and misinformed people who want the range closed. Their motivation was to close the club down, why? Ever since I can remember, the rifle range has been the rifle range. Sure, it's cleaner and safer and has more organized activities, but it's still the same old range it's been since it was established by veterans in 1947. Fran Dean and I used to shoot from the hill long-range and compete with one another in the old days. When fall came, we could shoot further than in the summer. It was a great time and I really enjoyed having that male bonding with the other guys as they mentioned me and taught me things about shooting, or mentored me, excuse me. I have fond memories at this club and realize it helped me to appreciate nature and it also made me a community-conscious person. It kept me from becoming a couch potato. A lot of people appreciate recreational shooting and to deprive them of their right to shoot in a safe and legal manner is beyond my understanding. I have always been active and continue to be that way. I remember setting up targets and trying to improve my skills, especially around hunting times. Lots of guys and some women came there to try out new ammo, guns, and types of shooting. It was a nice friendly environment. Why try to take that club and ruin it? What can be gained by causing this club to waste money fighting for rights when they already possess, fighting for rights they already possess under the USA Constitution? Why do the needs of the few overcome the needs of the many? People know that guns make noise. If you move next door, expect noise, it's as simple as that. And that bio-sludge remark was a terrible lie. The person who keeps pandering it should stop and do his research before he runs off with the mouth. The club did its due diligence, hired an agronomist, wetland scientist, and had DEP and Army Corps of Engineers look at the product in question. It cost a lot, but the club did it because they cared to do the right thing. Now people are accusing them of being irresponsible, wrong. Please rethink the actions you took. A lapsed permit for a replacement shed may cause a fine or need an inspection, but it doesn't require closing a place down. Its members include firepersons, police, and other professionals that need a safe place to practice. Where are they supposed to do, or what are they supposed to do? I want to hear gunshots on the range because it lets me know that I'm part of these, those proud Americans who made our history where it's free. I hope the town considers this when they make their decisions. A Second Amendment supporter, Keith Fordyer."
Just a few more. Ronald Davis. "My name is Ronald Davis, resident of Chickapi. I have been an active member of the Granby Bow and Gun Club since the 1970s and served as its vice president since Tom Gagne, Gagne, and Tom DeWolf served as presidents of the club about seven, eight years. I am a quiet guy who has something to say about the Granby Bow and Gun Club. I am not well now, but I enjoyed shooting both my bow and gun there for many years. To my recollection and from my experiences, I have always been able to shoot on the ranges that already exist there today and have been there since I was a member. I loved competing with other members who also shot there, a lot of old timers like me. I still get invited to shoot with people from the club. In the past, I've even helped with the cleanup and maintenance of the range. We all pitched in to make the club a clean, safe, and friendly place. We never built a bar and do not allow smoking in the clubhouse because we wanted to encourage families to bring their children. Many did. It didn't matter if I shot from a platform or the hill, the shed, or if I set up a custom shot to take some longer shots. Members were always safety-conscious and the members could set up their own targets as needed to test their skills. The range was always a place where guys gathered to talk and enjoy friendly competitions. A lot of guys came there to cite their guns for hunting. Others did skeet shooting and some members shot their bows. The club was mostly divided into bow and gun ranges, each clearly set apart for safety. It was always a friendly and safe place that has never had one single incident to my knowledge. It bothers me that after all these years, a few people who came in later, knowing they moved in next to the gun range, started complaining and stating things that are lies to the press because they want to shut down our club. It's been a good place to meet good people. What motivates people to do such things? If you move next door to a range, you're going to hear some gun noises sometimes. We have lots of people who work in the community who want to increase their skills there. It would be a shame for the whole community if they lost these rights. This place is a part of our heritage, why allow a few people to take it away now? American history is important to me, tradition is also important. The club is part of Granby's history too. The town has an obligation to its members also. I am 74 and many of my fondest memories are those at the Granby Bow and Gun Club. I am sure many others can say the same thing. The town's decision was too severe. Sincerely, Ronald Davis." And last but not least. My name is Paul Williams, a longtime member of the Granby Bow and Gun Club and vet. I have been a member of the club for many, many years. In fact, I'm a lifetime member of the club. I probably know the club better than most of the newer guys because I've been around a lot longer. I used to volunteer on the grounds, building, and did 3D archery for many years there too. I think it's a shame the town closed the range for those who enjoy the gun range. We all helped build that shed in question. It took longer than expected, but it is up. It even brought the club more, the club together more. The town said it was never inspected and permit ran out. Okay. Okay, then the club should pay for the inspection. Done. Our club has hired agronomists and wetland scientists to measure all the wetlands and prevent future problems. We even have professional trainers overseeing the safety range operation. All this costs money, and we are the smallest club in town, yet our president makes sure all this stuff is done to make sure we do the right things for us and for the town. I'm glad our club does this because it makes it enjoyable and safe for everyone. The Granby Bow and Gun Club has been a club for over 70 years. Why is the town and townspeople so interested now? Except for a monthly competition, most days, the club is quiet. I know because I helped clean up the shooting areas. Why are people complaining now? We haven't changed a lot, but more people are shooting than before because shooting competitions have made guns and competitions more popular. Those shoots, those shoots help us pay for all the things the club needs to keep it safely maintained. If you live or move in near a gun club, chances are you will hear a gun. I shot the range for years. I loved taking long shots and used to compete with other members. It was fun. Thanks to a lot of hard work, our range is cleaner, more organized, and easier and safer to shoot than it was probably 70 years ago. We have a good and safety-conscious team who volunteer their time to ensure we are doing the right things. No one is perfect, but our club works at it all the time. The town should recognize that this club, other than the inspection of one shooting shed, has done most everything else correctly. We are a bow and gun club and have a right to remain one. I hope the town realizes that this club is a piece of its own. Sincerely, Paul Williams. So at this time, I'd like to formally introduce these affidavits into the record if you'd like to have another copy.
Yes.
Do you have an additional copy for?
And I'd just like to make note for the record that Andre Mercier's, which is included in there, is a remitted. So just a few more points before turning over to Martha for conclusory remarks. As I stated, the powers tests, it's three prongs. We were just going over the second prong, which is that there's been no change to the quality, character, or degree of use. Every one of those affidavits attests to this fact. Nothing's changed. There's no denying that the club was used as a target shooting range since 1947. And in 1974, when zoning was enacted and when the grandfather protection commenced, it was being used consistently with how it's being used today with no substantial extensions. The third prong is the effect of the club's property's use on the neighborhood, which is unchanged. And to highlight that, I'd like to present a, another case out of the Middlesex Superior Court, which is John Hepting versus Maynard Roden Gun Club Inc., miscellaneous 128640, This case, in this case, the Superior Court analyzed whether a gun club that had been in operation only since 1970 would be seen as a non-conforming use where it altered its use slightly and new houses had recently sprung up in the area. The court said, quote, "The principal question to be decided by the court in this litigation, brought by the building inspector of the Town of Sudbury to enforce its zoning laws, posed in soap opera terms, is whether a landowner's use of its premises as a shooting range since at least 1968, without objection from the Town of Sudbury, is now at peril because homes have been built in its general vicinity." The court held that the pre-existing non-conforming use of the club's land in Maynard for target shooting protected the club's general use of its land as a pre-existing non-conforming use, despite the fact that neighboring landowners had brought forward claims of potential safety hazards. The court elaborated, "It is unfortunate that real estate developers chose to build homes in an area close to the club where it had been located for many years." Now, in comparison to the case we have at hand, the Hepting court was a use of 20-plus years, whereas the use in our case is 70-plus years. And the increased sensitivity of range opponents to the sound of gunfire, whether it's motivated by potentially selling their properties, their views on firearms, the management of vegetation, the fact that they may be retired today and they may be spending more time at home, those are all factors. And none of those factors sufficiently caused, should have sufficiently caused the Board of Selectmen to enjoin the club from its use because those effects on the neighborhood are consistent with the effects on the neighborhood in 1974. Just because the neighbors might be home now a little more than they were 40 years ago doesn't mean that there's more activity taking place on the range. And furthermore, as Martha stated, there have been rumors that a development is coming forward or potentially going to be built just south of the range. And if in the event that that is created, the complaints of those future home buyers would not be able to forbid the club from using the range as it had been using it in 1974 and today. In conclusion on the, on this matter, in order for you to uphold the board's decision and not rule in our favor, you have to find that all three of the powers tests prongs are, were in the favor of the, of the board's findings. And most relevant in making that decision is whether or not the use that takes place today is a substantial extension or a substantial change in use. And it's our position that it's not substantial because substantial is a very specific legal term of art. It's not your typical locker room discussion of substantial. This is a specific term with a specific definition. And in order for the use to have been substantially extended, it has to have, it has to have complied with, or it has to, excuse me. Let me give you examples of a substantial expansion. Changing a tailor shop to a dry cleaner would be a substantial expansion. And the reason for this is because they're two fundamentally different businesses. Converting from a small gravel pit to a large gravel pit, this is a substantial expansion because small to large, by definition, substantial. Changing an ice plant to a fuel oil facility, again, a conversion of a business to a completely different use, that's a substantial change. Changing a dance hall to a restaurant, a small pier to a large marina, and converting a hotel to a nightclub, they're all substantial expansions or changes. What's not a substantial expansion? A gravel pit using improved methods, from using hands to using machinery, a seasonal inn to a year-round inn, an inn to an apartment building, or an increased use of junkyard. Now, if you look at what constitutes a substantial expansion or change and contrast it to what isn't, you would seamlessly find that the club fits into the latter category, that the club is not a substantial expansion. Any of the uses that are continuing on the club today, including the 1,000-yard firing area, is not a substantial expansion. All they did was put down a concrete pad, they made the place more safe, they done a little bit of cutting. I don't see any case here or any example that could pin that into a substantial expansion. And for that reason, among the other reasons that I have raised today, I hope that the board finds in favor of the Granby Bow and Gun Club. Thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Martha Dean.
Before you do that, please, Town Council, do you have any questions for the witness?
Yes, we would like to ask Mr. Mercier some questions.
Where would you like me to stand?
Right here. That's fine. Good evening. My name is Kevin Malkey. And forgive me because I think I've lost my voice. So if you can, if you can hear me, let me know if you can. You had indicated on direct testimony that as part of your upgrade of the, of the gun club, that you invited people to bring material into the gun club. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that material was dirt. Is that correct?
Yes.
Dirt, correct? And so was that given to the gun club?
It was given, yes.
It was given to the gun club?
Some of it, some of it was bought.
Okay, or in some of it you purchased. And that material that you bought and you purchased, you brought into the gun club and you placed it in a certain area, correct?
Yes.
And in addition to the material that the gun club bought and purchased, you also removed and excavated certain area of the gun club, correct?
Yes.
You were moving earth around?
Yes.
And you also put the earth that you moved around in an area as well, correct? And at some point?
You spread it.
You spread it around?
Yes.
As well as the, some of the earth that you purchased as well, correct?
Yes.
And did you mark the earth that you purchased?
Marked it?
Yeah.
We put in designated areas.
You designated areas? And how did you designate those areas?
We're going to use them.
Okay. And so if you needed it, you could use it, correct?
Yes.
And it's your testimony that excess material that you didn't need from the site, you had moved or you had hauled out, correct?
Yes.
And you never saw a earth removal permit for that issue, correct? Now, there was a building permit that was issued in 2010.
Yes.
Do you remember signing that building permit?
I think it was Tom Donahue.
May I approach? Is that in your signature?
Yes.
Okay, so you remember signing it?
Yes.
And you signed this permit in 2010?
Yes.
March 15th, 2010, it looks like. So, but you signed it in or around 2010, is that correct?
Yes.
And that was for the construction of the shed, correct? And since that time, when did you complete the shed? 2016, you completed?
14.
Do you not remember when you completed the shed?
14.
Do you or do you not remember when you finished the shed?
I don't remember the day at the moment. It's been unknown.
Is it completed today?
Yes.
Do you have a certificate of occupancy to this shed? As you sit here today, there's no certificate of occupancy. I'm going to move to introduce the building, Town of Granby Building Department Exhibit. Are you done? Just one moment, please. Give extra time. There you go.
I will return my argument to the, you said there would be argument at the end of the presentation. Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Is there any other questions here?
No more questions.
You make the presentation now?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Benjamin Coyle, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, acting in their capacity as the zoning enforcement officer. I, I think we got a little off track. We started right on track saying exactly what this hearing is about. This is about a cease and desist letter and order that was issued by the Board of Selectmen that was read into the record. And somewhere along the line, we got off track insofar as the affidavits that were read into the record, Attorney Dean talking about different issues that are not before this board tonight, but what is before the board are the three violations. And what I think is extremely important to note is that in the board's decision, it specifically talks about the cease and desist and provides the opportunity for the club to do the right thing and to get the permits and/or occupancy certificates that the, that the select board determined were necessary based on the enforcement of the bylaws of the Town of Granby. That's what this is about. In the first violation, the board says, "We're issuing a cease and desist until you obtain a special permit, site plan approval, and get a certificate of occupancy for the shooter shack that you were supposed to have done seven years ago." That's what it says. It doesn't say we're shutting your club down. It's not anything about that. It's asking the club to be a good citizen and to do the right thing and follow the bylaws. The second violation was with regard to the, with regard to earth removal. Now, Mr. Mercier testified that there was earth removed from the site, but ironically, it was brought in and then taken off. Now, we don't have any evidence that that actually happened, only his word. But what he did admit is that the earth was removed from the facility. The third issue with regard to the special permit and the issuance of the cease and desist for the 1,000-yard shooting range isn't to stop the use of the, of the club in its entirety. It's to say, okay, you're using a larger portion of the range that we found wasn't in existence prior. You've expanded the use. We're asking you to get the appropriate permit and/or finding and come back and allow it to be used. That's what the, the select board decided. In making that determination, it was acting on three complaints that it received from citizens of the town. I would like to submit those three complaints that were submitted to the board upon which the enforcement action was, was issued, just so that we have a clear record of these So it was those complaints that were the genesis of the issuance of the cease and desist order. In regard to the first violation, the board determined that a special permit that was issued on January 25th, 2010, and filed with the town clerk on the, on February 18th was not, was not substantially used and that construction had not commenced and continued regularly. The club says that the, the permit didn't lapse. The board does. There's case law that, that suggests that special permits should not ordinarily be warehoused indefinitely and that the two-year lapse set forth in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9, and parallel municipal bylaws aim to present the warehousing of such special permits. Now, I understand that the board, that the club may have fallen on some hard times. It may have had some issues with obtaining the necessary funds and getting the volunteers to, to continue with the work in an expeditious manner. They could have asked for an extension of the special permit. There's the right to do that. Additionally, this case is a bit distinguishable from the other cases cited by counsel for the club in that many of those cases deal with a phased development and, and the anti-lapse of that. When you're building a 24-house When you're building a 24-house subdivision, you build the first two houses, you get an issue, and then it takes you longer than two years to complete the rest. That's what the statute is for. That's what the anti-lapse is about. The zoning bylaws that this town has have been approved by the Attorney General's office. Those bylaws have gone through and been vetted. While the club proposes that there may be some issues with those, I would suggest that the Attorney General didn't find any issues with those. Additionally, and what's noted in the decision of the special permit decision that was issued, it's on page three that was recorded in Book 10119, page 122. I think it's important to note of another provision in this variance that was never, ever appealed or addressed by the club. "All permits necessary for the prosecution of work shall be obtained within six months, and the work shall be completed within 18 months from the date of this notice." It wasn't done within 18 months. It wasn't done within two years. It took almost four years, maybe even a little bit longer. So I'd like to submit a full copy of this board's decision dated January 25, 2010, and recorded with the town clerk in February, just so that we have it for the record. The club alleges that the permit appears to accidentally specify that the lapse standard would apply to a special permit for change of uses. However, the club didn't address the issue with the 18-month period within the permit. Furthermore, the board received email communications from the former building inspector, Russell Ducharme, that it was provided prior to the public hearing when it made its determination previously. I'd like to submit a copy of the email that was received by the board from Mr. Ducharme upon which it faced some of its decisions. In the email from Mr. Ducharme, he indicated that he had received a complaint at some point in January or at some point in 2014. He viewed the site and he noticed a few things. He noticed not only did, was there an issue with the shooter shack potentially not being completed, he noticed that the building permit that was previously submitted into evidence, in his opinion, had expired. The building permit that they were using, in addition to having the special permit, you still needed a building permit. The notice of decision of the special permit requires the club to comply with any and all laws of the commonwealth and all local ordinances. In this particular case, their building permit expired. It expired after the abandonment, I'm sorry, if it wasn't commenced within 180 days or if there was an abandonment period of 180 days. The case law with regard to building permits is not identical to that of special permits, where substantial completion and you need to continue to work is integral to that. There are regulations that pertain to asking for an extension. That was never done. Lastly, there still is no certificate of occupancy for this shooter shack. As we sit here today, as Mr. Mercier stated, rather than walk into the building department and say, "Jeez, you know what? We were informed that we need, in order to use our shooter shack, really all we need is a certificate of occupancy. Can we get one? How do we get it? What do I need to do?" Instead, they appealed and we're here tonight. That hasn't been done. He could have done it at the same time, but they didn't. So based upon all of the foregoing, I believe the board was justified in finding that the special permit lapsed or in the alternative was justified in ordering that the shooter shed should not be utilized, based on the fact that they do not have a certificate of occupancy. They get a certificate of occupancy, they can use it. It's that simple. Violation number two, the earth removal. The board found, based on the email that was received from Mr. Ducharme, that there was some potential for, or some allegations that there was removal of earth. It wasn't until tonight that we heard that, yes, earth was removed, but it may have been earth that was brought there from a different facility or from someone else. Now, whether or not that's accurate or not, the evidence that this may have occurred back then is suspect on both counts. So to find that there was indeed a violation is based on circumstantial evidence that the board relied on as well as circumstantial evidence presented by the club tonight. I would suggest to you that the board was justified in making its, in finding a violation. Violation number three. The club argues that it's not subject to the special permit provisions of Section 6.29 because the special permit that it applied for in 2010 was solely for the purchase, or I'm sorry, was solely for the construction of the shooter shed and not for the use of the property. I disagree with that. And I believe that there's case law out there that suggests that once you avail yourself of a certain permitting procedure, you must follow that through to its end. You can't pick and choose and halfway through say, "Jeez, I want to try, I want to go a different way. I don't really need that particular permit. I'm grandfathered in. I'm a pre-existing non-conforming use." So under the case of Cumberland Farms v. Zoning Board of Walpole, I think it stands for that premise. Moral, and this is equally as important, is not only do the zoning bylaws have a provision with regard to an alteration of a special permitted use, but as Attorney Ravelson stated, this is a pre-existing non-conforming use. That's his alternate argument. The zoning bylaws provide for that. Under Section 3.34 of the zoning bylaws, it states that "pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be extended or altered when the special permit granting authority makes a finding as designated by the ordinance or bylaw that such change, extension, or alteration is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use is to the neighborhood." So even if you're a pre-existing non-conforming use and you want to expand or alter, you need to come before the board and say, "Hey, this is what I want to do." And while you may not need to issue a special permit, you still need to issue a finding. That provision of the bylaw has been upheld and is an alternative to the special permit requirement of, excuse me, Section 6.29. Everyone's in agreement that the Grandy Boon Gung Club was in existence prior to the enactment of the zoning bylaws. The zoning bylaws do not define what a shooting range is or any other analogous use. And as such, the club's use of the property is essentially grandfathered as a pre-existing non-conforming use. We all agree with that. However, to preserve the protection afforded to a pre-existing non-conforming use under Section 48, Chapter 48, Section 6, any subsequent use of the property must not constitute a change or substantial extension of the non-conforming use. As stated in Oakham Sand and Gravel Corp. v. the Town of Oakham, once there is a change or substantial extension to a non-conforming use, resulting use must comply with the current zoning bylaws to avoid becoming an illegal use. Although the character of a non-conforming use does not change solely by reason of an increase in its volume or because the hours of operation have expanded or because of the improvement in equipment used, a dramatic increase in the intensity of these characteristics can rise to the level of a qualitative change or a substantial extension that constitutes an impermissible alteration of the non-conforming use. The board determined that there has been an expansion and/or alteration of the use of the property that required a special permit and/or site plan approval or in the alternative of finding under Section 3.34 of the bylaws. The board believed that there was a substantial expansion of the use based on the construction of a longer shooting range. The board, in the complaints that were submitted, were provided with some satellite photography. That satellite, those satellite photographs showed the footprint of the club expanding a little bit. Not a little bit, a lot of it. Now, I took the liberty of preparing some colored photographs based on the information that was provided to the board of selection. I'm going to provide you with a few copies of these. So you'll see the first picture. Black and white, 1990s satellites weren't all that great. 2001 map, you'll see the footprint of the club. 2008 or '09. 2011, '12. And you can see that the footprint keeps growing and growing and growing. 2013, '14, you can see the expanded areas. And you get to 2016, shooter shack. It's zoomed in on it. Looks as though it was completed at some point in 2016. So based on the evidence that was presented to the board and the club's own acknowledgement that it has trimmed trees or entered into a forestry plan, it has done some significant work based on the evidence that was provided to the board to show that there has been a change or an alteration. What is a substantial change or an alteration that rises to the level of requiring some additional findings by the board or potentially resulting in the grandfather protection being lost? Attorney Ravelson correctly stated, "The powers test. It's a three-prong test." It's one of those things that you see almost every day when you're doing land use. However, I disagree with Attorney Ravelson where he said you need to find all three are applicable in order for it to be lost. Disagree. That's not what it says. It says one, two, and/or three. Not all three. You need to find one. This board needs to find that there was one of these criteria met in order to substantiate the board's findings. So let's take a look at those one more time and refresh our recollection. Number one, whether the use reflects the nature and purpose of the use prevailing when the zoning bylaw took place. I think we all agree, the gun club's been there a long time. It was there before zoning. It's there now. The Board of Selectmen could not have made a finding that incorporated that because the evidence didn't support it. Let's look at number two. Whether there is a difference in the quality or character as well as the degree of use. Submit to you, the board took a look at these satellite photos and they said, "Jeez, you know, we looked at them. It looks like there was a substantial change there." At some point, the club started advertising that it has a thousand-plus yard range that no one else does. That's what it's doing. It's getting more members, and that's great. It's wonderful. The only issue that the Board of Selectmen had was, "Come back in front of the appropriate authority and get the appropriate approval." That's all they said. And stop using it until you get that. Don't stop using the whole range. Just come back. Give the board an opportunity to hear what you're doing and to determine and make the determination as to whether or not there's a difference in the quality or character of use of the property. The complainants believe that there is. The complainants believe that there was a substantial change in the quality or character as well as the degree of the use of the property because they hadn't had any issues before. In the past four years was when things started to change a little bit. Why? Is it because the club cut down some trees? Is it because they started doing some things to improve it? It may have been. It may have not have been their intention to do that in order to make things more difficult for the neighbors. But it happened, according to the neighbors. And it happened within the past four years because there weren't any issues before that. And as a result of that, and the club putting itself in that position, unfortunately, it now begs the question, "Has there been a substantial change?" Which is why we're here. The board found that there was. You guys are ultimately going to make the decision. Number three, whether the current use is different in kind and its effect on the neighborhood. Well, I would suggest to you that the complainants believe that it is. They provided evidence to the board through their complaints that there has been a change in the effect on the neighborhood based on what's going on at the club. Is it because of the trees? Is it because of the longer range? I'm not sure. But there is a change. And whether that change has had the effect that is substantial enough, the board found that it was. And the board would hope that you would find the same based on all the evidence that was given. So with that, I'll let closing arguments.
Also, you may wish you could present an oral summary or you can, at this time, or you, if you wish, you may send us something in writing within 10 days. Submit a written summary. What's your preference?
Can we make a short statement? Briefly, or but?
Briefly, okay.
Just going down the violations one by one. Opposing counsel stated that a building permit was required and an occupancy permit was required, which is, it's unquestionable that there's a building permit required, but that wasn't what the violation was. And the Select Board would have to give notice that the building permit was bad. They did state that a certificate of occupancy was required. And it very well may be, and the club has no problem getting a certificate of occupancy, but that doesn't, the building permit expiration was not the reason for the violation. It was the special permit, which I've summarized a host of case law that supports our argument that the special permit never lapsed because of the case, the La Bissar case, which states that the beginning of construction does not necessarily require the erection of the structure. It simply requires preparation, preparatory work. ZBAs across the state, such as in Winchester, have found the same. And I would hold to the board to the same standard under state law. Secondly, earth removal. Counsel for the board cross-examined Mr. Mercier regarding the earth removal and asked him about who removed it. And it's his testimony in that he never personally removed any earth. The only removal of earth was from the trucks that came and left. And the bylaw specifically talks about the club removing its own earth. Mr. Mercier and the club members never did that. And they can't, there can't be a violation against them for something that they never affirmatively took action towards. And then lastly, on the 1,000-yard firing area, counsel for the board cited the OCAM case, which is the seminal case on substantial expansion of use. And he stated specifically, "The increase in volume and improvement of the use are permissible." And that's exactly what's happened at the club. There's been, there's been a little bit of membership increase. There's been an improvement of the area. And if we look at the- If we look at the pictures that were presented, and I've taken a look at them, there's no question there's been maintenance, but maintenance does not rise to the level of a substantial expansion, especially when you have numerous cases, which I've cited, that tell you exactly what a substantial expansion is. And the only way that this could be a substantial expansion in this case is if the club, for instance, started selling firearms on the property, or they started a manufacturing facility on the property. Mere maintenance, and if you look through all the pictures, no offense to the club, but it looks pretty lousy in the early 1990s. But as you go through the years, there's been a significant amount of maintenance of the roads, and maintenance of the roads does not rise to the level of a substantial expansion of use. And a substantial expansion of use is what's required in this case to enjoin the club from using all of its facilities, but I don't see any substantial expansion. And in regards to the powers test, the effect on the neighborhood, I just don't see how the use of firearms in the same manner as they had always been used would rise to the level of a change in the effect on the neighborhood. As I stated before, and in other cases around the Commonwealth, the prime example is a neighbor who has reached the age of retirement, and they're suddenly, they find themselves at home more often, and because of that, they can hear when firearms are going off, that they're there during the day, they're not at work anymore. So obviously, there's going to be, to them, it's an expansion, but in reality, it's what's always been going on. So I would rest on that, on my legal argument, and Martha would like to just add her conclusory remarks.
She wants to make remarks.
And if I may have the opportunity to submit a follow-up writing.
One or the other.
I guess we would ask permission to, so I wanted to share with you a little bit of my experience defending shooting ranges, and I defend shooting ranges around the country, and we typically come across these scenarios, and when we're in litigation or before the town, the question often is, what's really going on? And there is a certain fingerprint to these situations, a certain pattern that comes up over and over again, and I just wanted to share with you a little bit of experience there and how these cases can be, these situations can be resolved successfully. And if I could have the, if you would give me a couple of minutes just to share a little bit of that information, which would not be in our reply brief, I think it would be helpful to you in understanding the situation, because it is a unique situation, but it's a situation that I'm very familiar with. So if you would indulge me for a couple of minutes just to provide a little bit of context to what's going on here, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Five minutes.
So as I said, we defend shooting ranges, and typically, the complaints start with noise. There's typically the range protection statute, and then they quickly turn into zoning, safety, and environmental issues very quickly. Typically, range opponents are trying to shut down a range, they'll often say they're not opposed to firearms, but they, but when we do the FOIA request and we look at all the documentation, they are absolutely trying to shut down the range. When we do the depositions, it comes out that they're trying to shut down the range. Typical, as in this scenario, they often complain about noise, and then it turns out that the range isn't even open on the day that they're complaining about noise. Those kinds of facts cause one to wonder, what's really going on if people are complaining about something that isn't happening at this club? And if noise isn't the issue and they quickly move into other issues, what is really going on? And it turns out that the range opponents typically are homeowners who, a small group of homeowners, who come to the town and try to get the town to do the work of what would normally be litigation work, trying to shut a club down through an injunction. They try to get the town to do it for free, they'll use a board like this that doesn't have authority over noise to go after the range over noise, they'll use other boards and commissions, as you've seen in this case, to try to shut down the club without the range opponents actually having to go to court. What we've found in every single case, and I've always remained open to the possibility that there will be a case out there that isn't like this, but in every single case, we find developers behind these range opponents. They have gone to them, they've offered to buy their land, and I frankly don't believe often the developers will buy their land, but they say, if you get this range shut down, we will pay X amount for your land, you'll get more for your land. So if you want to sell, we're interested in buying, go get the range shut down. And they feed them in the background, information, and they give them the financial incentive to go out and to start this type of an action. In most cases, the town gets wise to this very quickly, and they see that the facts don't really add up, people are complaining about things that don't really exist, that didn't really happen, and the town, in most cases, shuts down the proceedings fairly quickly and tells the range opponents, if you want to shut down this range, go to court and make your arguments to a court with experts, with witnesses, with rules of evidence, so that we don't have leading questions, putting words in, you know, witnesses' mouths by either attorney, and go through the process, because the rules of evidence were created for that process, expert witnesses were created for getting to the bottom of these issues, but this is really not, in most cases, the issue that's before the town per se. So in this case, you have a shooting shed that was permitted, the construction begun quickly, it continued on, and there was no interruption in that construction process. How long it takes really doesn't matter under the case law, they could have taken 10 years to build it, as long as they continued constructing it and finishing, completing it, and began within the two-year period. So this is really not a case about a building permit, it's really not a case about a new shooting range, because there is no new shooting range or new shooting area, it's not a case of an expanded footprint, there's no expanded footprint, we've had witnesses and affidavits talk about how the range has been used historically. It's really about something else, and we don't have all the details, but Attorney Ravelson said that supposedly these houses will be going in or might be going in. We have a table full of documents going back to May of last year showing Facebook pages with actual listings. These are actual houses that are being sold now, that say they're being sold in a nice, quiet area of town. So somebody either thinks it will become a quiet area, it has some inside information thinking that they can make it a quiet area, or they like the sound of shooting and consider that the quiet sound of the countryside. But we want you to understand that this is a typical scenario, and that we don't believe this is the proper setting to be fighting over whether this range has a right to exist. That should have happened in court, it should not be a cost borne by the taxpayers, these range opponents should sue the range directly, the taxpayers should not have to carry these costs and hire a counsel to come to meetings like this and do elaborate presentations, it's just an inappropriate use of taxpayer money, and we would hope that this board would see this issue, these issues for what they are, and shut the process down and finding in favor of the club. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll reserve my rebuttal to submissions, I would only ask that the board strike everything that was just said, it's not even important, it's not even...
Okay, at this point, the board is closing the hearing tonight, and we're going to take the matter up under advisement until we meet and deliberate and vote on its decision prior to December 30th, the time within which is needed to decide.
Yeah, this simply is saying that this board has 100 days from the date of the filing of the appeal to make its decision. That decision, that 100 days expires December 30th of this year. The chair is not saying that they're going to wait until December 30th to meet, deliberate, and vote on its decision. It simply indicates that they're going to take the matter under advisement based upon the testimony that's been given by both sides tonight. At some point in the near future, they will call for an additional hearing, and in public, without the participation of counsel or the public, they will discuss and deliberate the evidence that was presented to them this evening, and ultimately vote and make a decision on this matter.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.